I'll make sure I put it in there.
Slow down.
Do you have time?
Yeah.
Whoa. I don't know. I'll make sure I put it in here.
I already got my seat in my spot.
I wonder how that got in.
I don't know. Imagine.
You settled in, Gaby?
I am, yes.
Good, all right.
I apologize.
Not a problem. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Sony Board Appeals Meeting for August 19th, 2021.
Mark, yeah, could all of you turn your mics on just to the front so the red light will go on?
There we go.
Thank you.
TV camera? All right, so welcome to the Sony Board of Appeals Meeting, August 19th, for the Village of Webster, 2021. We have one item on our agenda tonight. It is a continuation of our last meeting where certain information wasn't available at that time to be able to make an appropriate decision, so we tabled that to tonight. Couple of administrative items that we'll take care of, and then what we will do is we will ask the applicant to speak and let us know what it is he would like to do and why he needs relief from the current zoning. I was not at the last meeting, so we have been passed out the meeting minutes. They are impressive, I will say that. But what we need is for folks to take a look at those, review them, see if there's anything you want to make as an addendum or otherwise, and then we'll call for a vote on approving them either as written or with that addendum. Anytime.
I'd like to compliment Joe on the action she did for a very long meeting. I made a motion on the approval.
Mr. Baker has got a motion on the table to approve the meeting minutes as written.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Kathy Bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Everyone except me voted Joe. All right. I'm sorry, I don't know your name. I typically would have it, but as a continuation of the previous meeting, introduce yourself, tell us who you are, where you're coming from, and what it is you'd like us to consider this evening.
Sure. My name is Joseph Burkhardt. Good to see everybody again.
Yeah, Joe, one thing before we start, we are typically a board of five. We need three votes in the affirmative to approve any variance request. As we are short by one member tonight, I will always give the applicant the option of returning at another time when we have another meeting, September 2nd, where you could have a whole board and/or you can choose to proceed on as you would like right now.
Let's proceed, please.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate the offer, though. So I'm Joseph Burkhardt. I'm the managing member of the holding company which owns 60 Barrett Drive. Last time we reviewed the proposed sign package, there was a request for some additional information, and at that meeting, I think many of us garnered a better understanding of the code. I had provided information to the village team, and I'm not sure if everybody has the spreadsheet. This is kind of the final calculation for what's reported based on the signed package requested. So that's about as brief a summary as I think I need to have.
We'll go into a little detail, because I wasn't here, and I hate to make up. We're not going to relive the last meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, but that was where we are. When we directed a variance, at least last time, at least one?
Correct. There was a variance for the standalone directory sign at the entrance of the parcel. So there's currently a directory sign there. The new sign is slightly larger and more functional than the existing sign. So I needed a variance for that based on the size of that to accommodate all the tenants' names.
Okay, and that sign replaces the existing sign, is that correct?
Correct. The standalone pedestal sign. Currently on the building, there is no building-mounted signage. I've inquired quite a bit as to the history of why that is. It just seems like it was something that the previous owners did not care to pursue. There's no other reason that I've been able to determine other than that. The tenants are very vocal in their desire to have signage. I think they've issued letters last meeting. I'm not sure if everybody got those, but there were at least four, five tenant letters in a time where the past year has been interesting for businesses. I think the need for signage at that facility has come to the forefront, and that's primarily why I'm here today. So as the managing member of the building, I think it's my responsibility to come here to represent the tenants and make this request.
So what we have is we have then we have one sign, a variance on a size variance essentially
Correct.
on Barrett Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and so now the additional one is to place them on the facades of each one of these structures or on one facade in a... And I apologize, you probably gave it to them as pictures, but tell me what it's looking like.
Sure. So right now, there's two main facades of the building. There's a south-facing facade, and there's an east-facing facade. Both facades have entrances into tenant spaces. We feel that it makes the most sense to put signage near where the entrance would be for said tenant. The first variance that we're requesting tonight is to be allowed to put signage on two facades. Right now, the code only allows for one facade unless you are at a corner lot.
Correct.
We are not at a corner based on street designation. However, the building does have a point problematic corner based on parking and the layout of the building in perspective to the lot. The signage that we propose, and I can share this with you if you'd like, but we have signage on both that south facade and the east facade, and the signage corresponds to where the tenant's located within the building. Okay, so if you were going to tenant A, the signage would be near the entrance to enter tenant's A's space. Now, the building doesn't interconnect within, but you wouldn't go in one entrance and try to walk through the entire building to get to another suite. The issue that we're facing is with the remainder of the variances is that the size of the tenant's space in relationship to the size of the facade requires some variance. One thing that I would like to try to achieve is some kind of consistency of size throughout the signage. However, since the allowable size signage is based on the rentable space of the tenant, and every tenant has a different sized space, in order to achieve that, we're going to need variances. So it doesn't make sense to me where we would have a 14-square-foot sign and then a 60-square-foot sign and all that. I'm trying to have some uniformity across the building.
Understood. That helps.
Yes, so that brings us to today. Did I address your questions?
You did address my question.
Do you have this package? Can I share this with you?
I don't have that. You can share that with me. But Bill, you don't get it. You get it all from July 15th meeting. It was in that package.
Yeah, those are the packets I delivered up to the board partners.
Okay, so this represents the calculation of square footage of the facade and/or the interior tenant rented space, correct?
Yes, to all of the above.
Okay. And just as a final thing for myself here, one of our alternate members and a member of the community did send in a letter. I am going to read it, and then I'm going to ask Joe to make it part of the record. It is from Larry Hall, and what he says is, "Since I am out of town for the scheduled meeting, I would like to share some thoughts and opinions on the agenda items." He does this item two and item one. I'm going to read it down. I don't know why he reversed them. But he says item two, and I'm suspecting that that is item two on the agenda, new freestanding sign for 191 West Main Street. "Since our last meeting, the two approximately 20-year-old flowering Japanese crab apple..." And then he gives the Latin name for Malius forabunda? All right, I'll buy it. All right. "Trees that were in front of the business have been removed. This has opened up the area and given the existing facade signs an unobstructed view. The applicable zoning section Mr. Burkhardt is seeking relief from is not applicable at this time. I would not support a motion to approve this variance." And he goes on to item one. "In regards to this request for relief from a larger freestanding sign, motion carried last meeting, request for off-premises sign variance at 191 Main Street, applicant-removed request. Given the freestanding sign granted variance, I am hesitant to support the facade signage variance request. This additional request calls for signage that is grandiose in size, and when added together with the new freestanding sign, this request is not consistent with the current appearance of signage within the building. Thank you," and it's signed by Larry Hall, and I'll make that... Ask Joe to just make that part of the meeting notes. And if anything you would like to say in response to that, feel free to.
To his point number two, which was his first point, I'm not here today representing 191 West Main Street in any capacity. As far as grandiose and inconsistent, I strongly disagree with that. I just, you know, what it's worth to you, and maybe it's worth nothing, but, I mean, we did go through the village and take pictures of every sign we could find to make sure that we were going to be consistent. I'm sorry, but, you know, we got phones and everything. So, you know, we made a concerted effort to ensure that we aren't in any way... any way removing the kind of charm of the village. And furthermore, being in the business district of the village, myself and my tenants included, strongly feel that signage is part of a business. So that would be my response to that.
Fair enough. Thank you, and it'll be in the meeting minutes.
Thank you.
All right, folks here, questions, comments?
Comments, I guess. Referring back to your pictures of other signs, there really isn't something to compare. I mean, some of those signs have been there for 20, 30 years, whatever. We're going by 2021 code book, and what is the standard now? After our meeting, I went back down and looked at your area there. There's a lot of signs already there. Are you going to remove those black metal ones?
Some of them are currently inconsistent with the current tenants. I would like to think that once we get building signage up, we could remove many of those post-and-panel informational signages that say, "Don't..."
So not before?
"...use this entrance." Well, without those, nobody knows what entrance to use for what tenant. So it's hard to agree to remove those without a kind of, you know, insight from this board.
But wouldn't that be considered sign space?
It could be, yes.
You know, he's got three black metal freestanding signs up there. There's two cloth canopies that have businesses' name on them. You've got that large directory with the arrows, which is, you know, a very efficient sign. I like that one, the one on the east side of the building that points to the... where that business is, left or right. And that oversized customer parking only. What other customers would park in your parking lot? Would they have a problem with somebody parking that's not visiting like your business is?
I can't speak to the details of why the signs that are there today are there today. My summary understanding of why that customer-only parking sign is there is for the urgent care, so employees or contractors, visitors, don't park there. It's for customers to the urgent care. So that's all I can tell you about that. I'm unsure why else that's there. That was there when I... when we acquired the property.
Well, it's just a couple of a lot of signs back there already. And I do like, I think the metal ones are very effective, you know, versus a lot of directory signs.
Sure. I think the directory sign that you referenced, though, the issue with that is that it is almost impossible to read from the street, and in order to see it clearly, you do have to pull it in through the parking lot and stop there and take a look at it.
But I think that's how most business parks are. You know that you're at this business park, and then your signage should go left or right with this girl. So that's my opinion. All right, that's all I've got to say. I just don't like the song and the signs. And the size of these, you know, what are we going to do about that overage of space that's being used?
Wasn't it your plan to take the... that sign right in front of the building? I thought the plan was to take that... take that down.
If we could put the building signage up as I'm proposing, I would gladly and I would happily agree to that as a condition of approval today. I don't have much love for that sign. It's ineffective. I can tell you, because we've been working on that building for a little while now. The number of people who, you know, come knock on the door trying to find some place is, I mean, we're shooting probably more than two a day at least, at least. So I'm happy to take that sign down, you know, but I do need some other... I need something else, obviously.
Since none of those businesses are like walk-ins, they've all made an appointment.
That's not correct.
No?
No. No, the urgent care is primarily only walk-in.
Well, urgent care is, yes, it is suffered from financial...
RGH, yeah, is not always appointment either, depending on what they're doing. You're allowed at certain times, specifically if you have a surgery where you can come in. The way that they now operate is there's a kiosk that you can log into, and you get put in the queue, almost like a Panera or something like that. You can see your name on the board when you're called up. And then there's a couple of tenants who are primarily more by schedule, but I think they also do encourage walk-ins to try to promote their business.
And does it ever happen?
Yes, yes, from time to time.
I don't know where, yeah.
Yeah, especially with the karate studio that's downstairs. A lot of parents will come in and say, "Hey, you know, where's the information? How do I sign up?" That kind of stuff. Where can I drop off my check? Yeah.
So couldn't the tenants have a little bit on their shoulders when they make an appointment to say, "We're here, or we're there, upstairs, downstairs"?
I don't disagree with that. But conversely, I think I'd like to, you know, never discourage any business that would walk in.
I know, I know, listen.
If you talk to the other, all the other business owners across the street, anything within 300 feet?
Within 300 feet, I think the only one that is applicable, well, there would be two. There'd be Lamor Physical Therapy who's moving next door. Candidly, they're challenging to get ahold of. I'm not sure what's going on with them. There's not a direct contact over there. They do have contractors doing work through the building, but I have not been informed with anyone specifically that I can talk to. I did talk to the accounting firm directly to Southeast, and we showed her the sign package and talked to her about it, and she had no objection. You know, she understood our need. And outside of that, I don't think there's anybody else within 300 feet. You know, Mark's Pizzeria, maybe, but they have a nice sign on their building, and they have a nice pedestal sign. U of R, I've done a lot of work with U of R. I'm very familiar with their off-campus real estate team. However, I have one of their competitors as a tenant, so just strategically, I would tell you what they would like to say. So candidly, I wasn't very interested in their opinion.
Well, how many businesses are we talking about that would fall within 300 feet?
Not very many. You pretty much named out the ones that would, because it's a pretty good-sized area down there. I don't even think the post offices are within 300 feet.
No, I think it's 170 to the street.
Yeah, yeah. And he owns the other buildings that are right around, you know, directly to the south of him anyway, so I'm sure there's a lot of... he's the owner of those buildings as well.
Okay, so there won't be any business that is going to be surprised to see what we know on the signs on the facade, and what is going to be, "Oh, my God, I didn't know about this"?
I would highly doubt that, since the majority of the businesses in that area already have their own signage. So I would be surprised if somebody had a substantial complaint.
Aaron, does the notification requirement only exist within residential neighborhoods? Or would it extend to the westbound businesses?
We actually did discuss that. I mean, it is more based towards residential. Internally, we've already talked about possibly specifying that, because it is a little bit hard with businesses and, you know, the business districts especially. But it is geared more toward residential.
It's geared toward it, but I wouldn't say that.
Yeah, no, it doesn't specify, that's what I was saying. But it's, like I said, it is geared more towards that, because houses are, you know, there are several houses within 300 feet that's toward businesses, unless you're right up in the village, you know, then you have literally a top of each other in the business district to other...
All right, but I think how I felt about that is that directory sign almost looks like it represents all of their time, or it doesn't.
Which sign you're talking about?
The one, the one up on...
That was dropped. That's not even a conversation you need to have.
Right.
But, oh, so the directory sign is...
The one up at Ridge and Barrett, that's...
And then they had one up on the...
That's out of conversation. Yep, so, yeah, we're not even worried about that one here. Drew is on that.
So right now, specifically, what's in front of us?
Just the signage on the building.
Signage attached to the building.
Correct.
Yeah.
And some of the, you know, signs that he spoke of, and that Kathy spoke of, you know, he... him and I had already had a conversation. Some of them were coming down anyway. And I can address some of them, because if some of them aren't permitted anyway, I would have them removed anyway. But he's already willing to, you know, have some of them removed, but that's, you know, that's a good point as well. And this is a unique building, you know? So I gotta, I do gotta speak as to that part of it. It's kind of like a little strip plaza, but, you know, several floors, it's not as spread out, you know? So that's the way I kind of look at it. Some of the signs are a little bit larger, but, you know, the building is, you know, off-the-road like that, and I do support what's here.
Kathy, refresh me with the plan of the board when it was in existence as a separate entity. Didn't I go through some work on signage in the village and what we wanted it to look like?
Yes, but we never, it never got into code.
Okay.
Design guidelines, 2011, so it's been a while. So often during a meeting, we will refer to this, not that it's in the code, but this is what the committee, what everybody felt was, you know, the blue of the signs.
Okay.
Size, color.
And I will make a statement, some of the signs meet the requirements, they don't even meet, you know, they don't even meet zoning. So I'd rather have it be uniform as well versus, you know, sporadic. If you want to have the one that is allowed to anyway versus, you know, I know what it says, I'd rather have it be, you know, uniform as well. Obviously, the board decided, I'm just giving my opinion.
Understood.
But, like I said, I'd support it versus, you know, some sporadic inconsistency.
All right. Michael, thoughts or comments?
I don't know. I'm still trying to grasp things, I guess, so... This chart was... Did you do this, or did you...
No, Jake and I... Jake's going ahead.
So does this variance that's needed include the freestanding sign?
No. The freestanding sign was already passed, so we did not include that in this.
But doesn't the freestanding sign, well, there are allowed two signs?
No more than one sign for the identification of business conducted on the premises except when it is located in intersecting streets, and we went over that one sign.
He's got, they got...
Yeah, we had already approved, and that's kind of what I said last time.
Right.
We're kind of doing it in reverse. We're approving that replacement of that sign that he's already dropped.
Right, so this variance request...
Yep.
...has already taken that sign into account, I guess, is what I'm...
Yeah, Jake and I went over that, yes.
Did you subtract out the totals that are in that sign?
We did not, because some of them, it wouldn't have made a difference. They still have been, you know, uniform. And the biggest one, it probably would affect it, was urgent care, but there's also, to be honest with you, a little question as to the way we figured that sign out, to be honest with you. We went off the dimension of the 11, 5 by 9, 7. That's if you're putting a big square sign on there, but in reality, it's not...
Right.
...that big. And I actually had a good conversation with the... There was actually quite a bit of that square footage that could come out from that, that specific sign, if we had to reconfigure it. So I think, again, I'd support that part of it.
My understanding, unless I'm misinterpreting this, is that I wouldn't need any further variances for either the freestanding signing or the building signage after tonight, unless there's a change of tenant.
As long as it was approved, correct?
Right.
Because if the new tenant came in...
Then we might have to...
Their sign could be the same, you know, same size, same dimensions. They would go over that unless you came to...
Right, okay.
Obviously, you need a change of use. That's just administrative, out of my office stuff.
Sure. So, yeah, I just want to make sure we're on the same page there.
Yes.
Thank you.
So if you haven't yet figured out the size and the names...
I'm not requesting any variances for the locations that I'm showing that is like future tenants. I'm not requesting anything for those. We'll have to come back in the future. And some of that will be based on the amount of square footage that they lease, because if they lease enough square footage, I don't need a variance. If they don't, then it's another conversation. And plus, I don't know the location either yet, depending on what space gets leased out. So I... Tonight, I'm only here to ask for those ones that are outlined on the notice, just because we have those tenants in place, they're looking for signage, they're the ones who have written the letters requesting signage. So it is very likely that you will see me... So it is very likely that you will see me here again. I'm sorry in advance.
So we're looking at like J. Stringer, Art Movement, is it Q. Janine B. is it?
No.
Okay. Urgent Care, Emerald, and then...
No, Emerald doesn't seem to be there.
Emerald, well, I got it. I didn't see the red. I was looking at something else.
I don't. Don't matter what you're thinking.
Well, no, I was just wanting to make sure that if we're going with, it's basically the ones with the name, except for, since it's not red over here, the Emerald one, we don't need to do anything on that. So RGH, urgent care, Art of Movement, and Stringer. Is that it? Four?
Oh, four.
Okay. Well, because Sweet C is red with it.
But that's not on the notice. I'm asking for any variances on that.
Let's see on the notice. It doesn't give me...
Well, I know it. The notice was in Art of Movement. It probably should have had the names of the businesses on the notice, so we didn't have to match up the notice with the spreadsheet.
I'm just trying to make sure every board member knows what we're looking at.
You're just looking at the variances for J. Stringer, Art of Movement, Urgent Care, and RGH. You said J. Stringer, Art of Movement, RGH, and Emerald?
No, not Emerald.
Okay, that's okay.
Urgent Care, not this one.
Urgent Care.
See, Urgent Care was the thirty-four-point-four.
I see a square foot variance. RGH is the twenty-five-point-one square foot variance.
Okay.
So Art of Movement is the thirty-one-point-nine square foot variance, and then J. Stringer is the nineteen-point-nine square foot.
Now, was the J. Stringer one of these proposed on here? Is that the photography place?
Correct, yes. We drafted that document before they became a tenant.
Right.
So they would absorb one of those. Their side would be on the south facade.
Okay, but is... So my... They're going to stretch their name out to fill in the twenty-eight-point-seven feet?
That's the plan. We would, or less, I guess I should say.
Well, then, I just tried to make sure, because, you know, I have the Art of Movement sign, I have the Urgent Care sign, and I have the RGH sign. I just couldn't find the J. Stringer one, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
But then I wanted to know if that was actually going to be twenty-eight-point-seven inches long, so...
Or less.
So you took it to the max end of each facade and/or tenant's base, correct?
What do you think about that? I'm sorry. I'm not understanding the question.
Okay. So we got one sign that's twenty-seven, twenty-eight-point-seven. We got another one that looks like it's twenty-four-point-three. We got another one that's eighteen-point-six, maybe, and so on and so forth.
Oh, the length of the sign?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So my goal isn't to extend their name or elongate the font of the sign.
Right.
It's just merely the length of their name, within reason. You know, if they have an absorbingly long name, we'd have to trim something down.
But I guess what I was getting at is you got somebody with a hundred square feet, and you got somebody with two hundred square feet. They're going to have different sized signs.
Yeah, my constraint for the lettering sign, I think the two outliers are Urgent Care and RGH. And that is in part given the shape of the facade and the fact that there is a panel, for lack of a better word, without any finestrations in it, that would be appropriate for a sign. So RGH has that right to the right of their door, and Urgent Care has that to the right of their door. Outside of those two anchor tenants, every other tenant, I'm trying to keep them within that two-foot size, that height. That's kind of my goal. So the length will have to vary a little bit to accommodate the name. But that two-foot height is really what I wanted. I felt that that fit well with that band on the top of the building above the windows.
So the J. Stringer sign could potentially be shorter.
Potentially, yes.
Because like if you look at the Rochester Regional Health sign, I'm just, just for simple math or whatever, J. Stringer is probably about ten characters or whatever, maybe ten and a half. So there's nine characters in the Rochester sign. So that's, this sign is ten feet wide. That's why I'm saying, that's why I'm really concerned about stretching out J. Stringer to fill in twenty-eight-point-seven feet.
Sure.
Maybe, I mean, I don't know. Then you wouldn't need a bigger variance, is what I guess I'm thinking, but...
Yeah, I think the difference between the RGH is just that that's stacked. I wouldn't encourage anybody, and there will inevitably be people who have their own ideas, but I wouldn't encourage anybody to stack lettering that's only two feet high, given that you're so far.
Well, no, I'm not stacking it. I'm just saying the word Rochester is ten feet, because it's all, it's one, you know, spaced out evenly, one probably two-foot letter. So that's only nine letters or characters long. So I would assume that J. Stringer could just be slightly wider than ten feet. If I may.
We were actually figuring that one being the eighteen-foot.
Okay.
Not that, not that twenty.
You see in this spreadsheet where it's got total signs, square feet requested, it's thirty-six-point fat, where it pulls the red one and, you know, the two-feet-by-eighteen-feet-three-inch. So it's not going to be twenty-eight feet long.
So that's what was used, was the eighteen-point-three?
Right, right.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Already like ten feet.
Thank you.
That works for me.
I'm getting lost with the numbers myself.
That's confusing. Well, right, I guess I need to, you know, what did you use for that?
So your idea was the height of the signs would be what, two feet?
That's, yes, that's what we proposed here today. I'm looking to keep that consistent. So it creates kind of a consistent band on that top portion of the building.
Just for my simplicity, and again, I was not here last night, although I did try to make it, which wasn't going to happen. Are there going to be four different colors?
I don't know. I don't know. My understanding of the code, there wasn't a color requirement, so I think just to identify, we just left it like that for now. I wasn't going to dictate to the tenants what color they should or shouldn't be.
And at the last meeting, we did touch base on color a little bit, because Emerald kind of goes with the green.
Right.
Urgent Care kind of goes with red. Rochester Regional, you know, they're sending out a uniform throughout the whole, you know, area with the black and blue and white, I believe.
And the Art of Movement was that typically color.
Yeah. So we did touch on that a little bit, but yeah.
But in our function, in our planning board function, that we hold all of those, we could get into colors. Yes?
We could.
We could recommend.
My concern is, is these companies have company standards that might be certain colors, though.
I often think, you know, you just don't want it to look like tutti-frutti. You know what? And don't take this the wrong way. When we look forward to these, this goes with the property. This variance stays there forever, and we don't look at the, or I don't, I say we. I don't look at the reasonable person, and you seem like a reasonable person. I have to think about just how unreasonable this could be taken based on whatever variance we granted.
Sure. Another thing that I would be agreeable to, if you wanted to put it as a condition, that these variances expire with the tenancy.
Yeah, I don't think I can do that. Can I, Dan?
If the property owner is consenting to this?
Sure. That's interesting.
Because if that alleviated that concern, and candidly, there's no function whatsoever for me to have a signed variance for somebody who's no longer there. And to think that in the world of so many various businesses, that the next business would fit that variance, I think would be ignorant on my part. So I have no problem with that condition. I think it solves my problem. I think it solves your problem.
But like the J. Stringer, I have photography written under that green sign, because weren't they going to be, weren't they going to be green?
I don't know what color they're going to be. Yeah, I have no idea.
I'm trying to remember the last week, so...
There's nothing in the code that regulates the color of signs. So can you make that a condition? Only if, you have to have some rational basis for limiting him to certain colors. And I don't know what, other than you just shooting from the hip saying, "These are the colors I like", what basis are you going to do to limit the color? Okay, let me ask one other question. So the sign is based on square footage in the facade. Suppose a business just explodes in Webster, and we decide, or the owner of the property decides now to break that up into smaller units. Do you have to take the sign down, and do the variance become invalid? If we break up buildings all the time, you put in a door, you put a wall down the middle of it, and now you got two offices.
I mean, essentially, because if somebody moves out of that building, I'll just say RGH. If RGH moves out of there, they no longer are there, and it's a different type of business, they have to know for a change of use anyway. So I'd be able to regulate that anyway, because how are you, every business has a labor change of use that's different from what's already there.
Mr. Burkhardt was already willing to have the variance expire with the tenant lease. So he's only going to cut the space in half if a lease is already expired, because otherwise, what tenant's going to, sure, you know, have nice space. Fair enough. Just, we asked the question, and... Kathy, additional questions?
No.
Bill? Michael? All right. Thank you very much. Going to close that portion. You should stay around. Right now, I'd like to open it up to the general public for anyone who would like to speak for or against this particular project. Just tell us who you are and what your feelings or thoughts are.
Richard Walder, Twine Elm Street. I'm probably one of the longest-term residents of the village, as you guys know. And I can remember when that was appealed, remember when most of the village was appealed. On signage, I see of these four variances there tonight. And to get this all done, and looking around the village as a whole, I see way too many signs and not enough of anything else to draw people in. I think too far-high sign all the way across the whole side of that building, basically, may be a little bit too much. I would like to see it scaled down a little bit so that it come within the code. It could be, instead of two feet high, one foot nine inches, and probably be seen just as well from the road. Are these going to be backlit signs or just a sign? If they're backlit, they're plenty too big. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's a reasonable question on the lighting. Is there going to be any lighting on these signs?
Yes, they are backlit.
They are backlit. So for my simple terms, neon or fluorescent, they would, you know, maybe fluorescent expresses a color, but lit in the back and they come out cool.
Correct. They're backlit, LED backlit, just because that's energy efficiency. There's a plastic lettering that goes in the front, and the rest of the frame is metal. And then that's how, it's backlit against that colored plastic.
Would these be on all light? Would they be on a timer where they could be shut off after?
Right now, all the lights, the exterior lights are on timers or sensors, depending on what their function is. These would be tied into that system. I would ultimately want them to go off, since nobody will be at the building. I'd prefer not to attract people there. So assuming that it's not a twenty-four-seven urgent care, which it's not today, and I don't think they have any intent of being that, I would want it off outside of, you know, normal hours. So, you know, stay on an hour after business or something like that, and turn on an hour before, you know, reasonable.
Thank you. Can turning them off or shutting them down or limiting their use to a specified period of time be written into a variance? Yeah, you can make that condition. Again, that's got to be reasonable, you know. I don't know how late some of these businesses stay open, but I don't think it would be reasonable to shut them off at, you know, seven o'clock at night or something like that, but... Eleven, midnight, yes.
I believe there was a condition on the directory sign. And please correct me if I'm wrong. I thought it was like midnight to five, or midnight to six, or something like that. Whatever that was, I would be agreeable to that, assuming the businesses are closed for all the signage on this building. I'd be happy to have that off during those hours.
What time is Urgent Care open till?
Right now, I believe it's nine o'clock.
Okay.
And I think they do have some seasonal hours, but I think it's nine o'clock right now.
Yeah, the freestanding sign was, it was to be internally illuminated on a timer to turn off at midnight. So I guess I just have one last question on the, so on the south side, you're requesting the two-foot-high letters? And then on the east side, you're requesting like one-point-four inches?
I believe, whatever it says in there, we were trying to be consistent with the band. But the side of the building is not wholly consistent throughout.
Right, and that's sort of why I'm asking the question, because I can see, obviously, there's a big definition on the east side where the windows kind of create that band.
Right.
And then, but on the south side, I guess the big center window, I'm sort of assuming, would be kind of that same, you know, have that same band with, you know, north of that or above that window.
I want to say that it's slightly different. The windows on the east side, just going off my memory from inside the building, they're higher up, because that's a corridor right along those windows. Whereas on the east facade, those are primarily offices, and they're slightly lower, because the sill, I want to say, is about to where my hip, a little bit below my hip. Whereas the east facade windows, I want to say, come up to more like my chest. So that band, I don't believe, is consistent from the east side to the south side.
The south side is actually where the doorway is going up, so that's equal to the size and height of a door on that area that you're seeing right there.
Okay.
I think the other smaller windows are consistent with the size in the front.
Well, so my opinion would be that this side would probably be better served with the one-point-four-inch size lettering than the two-foot because of, I guess, the band. But I can also see if you're trying to see it from Ridge Road, obviously, the bigger letter would be easier seen. I mean, this two feet. I mean, this two feet, yes.
That is big.
I think we take into consideration that, um, the road isn't, isn't a highway, you're driving fully in, driven into, so you'll be able to see a smaller than two-foot sign.
Would you be willing to consider a consistent size on all sides? So, the smaller size?
You put me a little bit of a tough spot here, mostly because I've discussed this package with the tenants, and I cannot have their approval on the concept. I'd have to go back to them in order to give you a, a complete answer on that.
Okay.
Plus, I probably would, well, it would be beyond my capabilities tonight to do the math to figure out.
We'll wake up like before.
No, no, what the variances would be with a one foot four inches?
I second his motion. I'm on that same vote.
You know, so, if you, if you want it smaller...
Well, no, I'm just, yeah.
You're just gonna have to come back another meeting, to figure out what the variances are gonna be.
And I'll give credit where credit is due. I use J Stringer for math, because his brain works phenomenal when I first. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just asking, what I said was my opinion, but...
Do we have many backlit signs within the village?
Oh, absolutely. We have many, many signs.
Yeah, I don't know anybody who does like them.
But that's, I mean, that's, unfortunately, that's how most signs are, just so you can see them. Otherwise, if they're just, I'll say, wood or metal sign against the building, then they have the...
Goose neck.
Yeah, the goose neck, the lights that come up and light them up anyway.
Yeah.
Well, I...
I think that's more attractive, you know, in a village.
Right.
That's what we do with...
Yeah, on, on Main Street, I agree. I mean, that's, I, I totally agree with that, yeah.
I had questions.
But I think in the business district, I actually think most of them are backlit signs. Do you have the post offices backlit signs?
I agree.
Yeah. And, yeah.
So, here's what I think I've heard. Any existing signs on the building will come down if this variance is granted, with the exception of like RGH and... I don't think you're gonna get RGH too for signing.
It's just the signs on the building. I'm not aware of any building-montage signage.
Okay.
There might be something on the windows for RGH. I think it can, if you had a logo on it from a former tenant, which I would gladly remove. I'm scratching my brain to think of any other ones, I'm sorry.
Okay, but, but you didn't do that. You were thinking of going, the way you find these signs.
Yep. Those aren't attached to the building.
Right. But any that are attached, if there's any up there, it's gonna be one, and it's gonna come down.
It would, it would have to, to leave the variance, so yeah, yeah.
Okay. I think I also heard, uh, that you would be open to a reasonable timeline on the, on the lighting, some kind of a timer or something that would kick them off, probably similar to whatever went with the, with the freestanding sign on the parking lot.
Yes.
And you would be open to the variance, or each one of the variances, because there appears to be, uh, one for each business that's in there, that variance would expire, and I don't know how to word it, but, on expiration of the lease, whenever the tenant moves, when the tenant becomes inactive, I don't know what it is, but whatever would be the appropriate terminology there.
Yes, I'd like it to be, um, on when the tenant moves out, not based on the lease per se, because we do have a lot of renewals.
Well, let's say that, whatever the right wording would be on this, to make sure we...
You know, count the existing tenant no longer occupied by the signs.
That's our intent.
Right.
Okay, um, there will be different sizes on the different facades. One looks like, uh, two feet, one looks like one feet four inches.
Correct.
Each one will more than likely be a different color, um...
Potentially, yes.
Yes. And they're going to be backlit signs, I would assume that. And the variance, and we actually only have four, I don't know why this leads through A, B, C, D, and E. The first one says variance to allow signage on additional facade, south side. Do we actually need that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the code only allows...
That's right, unless you're perpendicular to a street or a corner, that's right.
Facade that faces the street.
Yep. Okay, so, that's what we have in front of us. Um, a couple of other items here, though, before we go on. Do you have any other questions?
No, I do, are you? Okay, thank you.
Bill? So, Seekers covered the entire thing for the last time, or we have to do one?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we did. Yeah, I think, I'm pretty sure that covers, covers it. Because it's just an extension of, uh, right, because we came with it.
Yeah, it's type two anyhow, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so, this, the seeker was determined at the last meeting, so now we're moving on if we so desire. If there's no other questions from the board, no other questions from anybody in the general public, or comments, um, what we look for at this point in the meeting, as we, like I said, we've determined that, um, we should probably go through each one of these, and just, you know, do a, do a rendering of those five factors considered. You know, is it, is it owner, is it benefit to the applicant, can be sought some other way? So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take the first one, and that's A, and that's gonna be variance to allow signage on additional facade, that's gonna be the south side, the part facing not the lake. That's how we all learned, where's north? It's that way, it's where's the lake? All right. Where street facade is allowed, non-intersecting streets, 174D2. So, this allows for signage on an additional side of the building. And so, the five questions we're gonna ask ourselves are, whether undesirable changes would be produced in character of neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties? Bill, no?
I don't think so. Kathy?
So, all knows. All right. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be, can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance? Michael?
I don't know. It could be, but...
That's all right. So, Michael thinks yes. Bill?
Some, some of these signs would be very small if you didn't grant some kind of variance.
And they would be different in height and size.
Very different. You know, when, uh, you know, for example, the J Stringer, the max allowed is 16.6 feet. And, you know, so...
Yep.
What size sign would fit in that 16.6 square feet that you're gonna be able to see on Ridge Road?
Okay, so Bill says no. Kathy?
Oh, I don't know. No. But they don't have to see it from Ridge Road. Or they're gonna be on Barrett Drive.
No, we're talking about the one facing south right now.
Right.
Now, maybe you could see it from Barrett Road, but I thought the intent was to make it visible, or at least...
From Main Street?
Yeah.
And I don't think so.
Only for those businesses where the entrance faces Main Street. Like J Stringer, so some of them, they're on the east side, like Emerald, that's not a concern.
Right.
Rochester Regional Health, that's not a concern. Those are off from Barrett Drive.
Right. So, if I were to drive here, though, I don't necessarily, this is my first time there, I don't necessarily know that the yard movement is that side of the building.
Right.
I'd go to the building, and then I'm gonna probably go on the wrong entrance to begin with, and then work my way all the way in and go, well, crap, I should've parked on the other side. I mean, that's, to me, why it's...
You're only gonna do that once.
We lack a car rule.
Very true.
All right. Number three, whether the requested variance is substantial. Michael?
No.
Bill, no? Kathy?
No.
And I don't think so either. All right. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? Michael?
No. Why do I always gotta go first?
Question to my left! Michael was no, Bill was no, Kathy thought no, I, I actually thought that it did. I thought the lighting was gonna have some kind of an adverse effect. I keep thinking about it, um, but there's not a residential component over there, so maybe it wouldn't, but leave my answer at yes. All right. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created? I'll go first. I think it was. You bought the building, and you knew where the road was. All right? Bill?
Yes.
Michael?
I would say yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
All right. Now, taking into consideration each one of those things that we said, uh, should we grant the variance, and is there a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance for, um, signage on the south facade of the building at, uh, 160 Barrett Drive.
60 Barrett Drive, but that was good. All right, so let this, let this come out as, this is item A in the agenda, the variance to allow signage on additional facades, which is the south side, which is not the street side, where street facade is allowed, non-intersecting streets, 17554D2. We have a motion on the table to grant that variance.
I'll second.
We can also include, though, the lighting part and the tenants leaving. You tack that on to all of them?
I would tack it on to, that's actually a good, yes. And Bill, would you like to amend your motion? That the light, the lighting will be on timers as indicated, um, you know...
Till midnight.
Till midnight, no later than midnight, or off between midnight and daybreak, I don't know, I, but that, but that this will, will put this on to each and every one of them, and that they will come down when the tenant leaves the building.
Exits premises.
Exits the premises.
Okay, Joe got all that, I agree.
All right, so we have that motion on the table, that is to grant the additional facade, number one. Tenants will exit, when tenants exit the building, the variance is null and void at that point, and that the lights will be on a timer, consistent with the pedestal or freestanding sign on Barrett Drive, they will be consistent.
I second.
Michael has seconded that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? None? All right. Second one goes down. This is the 19.9 square foot variance for a 36.5 foot sign, uh, where 16.6 feet is allowed, and that would be for J Stringer, and I don't know whether we should put in names here or not, um, but...
Oh, I think you should.
Think you should?
Because it's gonna expire especially.
All right, so this is for J Stringer. So, it's a simple variance, uh, size variance to allow a larger sign. And, uh, by the way, you can reference the package if you'd like to make sure that the, the two-foot section is, is appropriate, or whatever, or 1.4 feet, whatever size it is. In keeping with all the other restrictions and requirements that, that went with the first one.
The timer and the...
That would be the timer, exit when the tenant, or the, the person who's in there leaves, or is no longer there, or the business changes, or whatever the appropriate words are, we're going to put them in, and the applicant has agreed to that.
What about removal of existing signs? Is that gonna be a condition?
Absolutely, well, that would go well. In my mind, that went with when the tenant left.
No, 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 that, that sign doesn't exist. I'm talking about the ones that Kathy was mentioning.
Right, the freestanding ones.
The ones that are, I'm against, the, the ones at the building now.
Oh, and that all existing signs that are there right now come down, and that this be your main signage piece.
I think Mr. Burkhardt was okay with that. Those are those wayfinding posts and...
Come on back up and tell us what you got.
So, I guess where I'm struggling is how to separate what I would consider informational signage from advertising signage. So, there's, there's a mixture of both out there, I guess, from what I would define that as, there's informational signs, like the no parking, or customer parking only, or, or whatever. Then there are some freestanding posted panel signs, placard signs, and they have the company's name or logo in the arrow saying like down, like go to the lower door, or the arrow saying up, to go to the upper door. In, in my interpretation, and I, I guess what I'm asking is, what is your interpretation? If it has their logo or their company colors, it's considered advertising, but if it was just the name of the business, it would be considered informational. I would still like to write that informational signage, because that sign will tell you to come to that side of the building, but it won't tell you to go up or down. So, I'd still like the information.
Is there any other sign that does that, though?
I, I can think of, I, I could've sworn there were two, and they were like right next to each other. They're both in that, like, island burn, whatever it is, between the ramp and the ramp going up and the ramp going down.
Urgent care now, sweet air, sweet D. The next sign, I don't think there's an arrow, or a movement.
No arrow or anything?
Well, the fence does cover the bottom part.
So, I guess where I was going with that is, I would happily...
How are these fine, how are these, tell me how these signs are attached? Are these something that the tenant brings in at the end of every night?
No.
Nobody leaves?
No, they're like the metal posts, aluminum posts with the aluminum panel, they're not lit or anything like that. So, what, what I would like is, I would gladly give, uh, remove any advertising type of signage, but I would still like to maintain any informational signage, because I think that's still an important component. Because even though this new building sign will tell you, okay, come to the south facade, there's two doors on the south facade, one is up, one is down. And especially if you're seeking a place like urgent care, I'm gonna keep the center up, and then have to go downstairs to get into urgent care, all that kind of stuff.
The term wayfinding signs?
So, we're talking about this one that says Barrett Center.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that sign is right up against the, um, east facade.
And then there's another one.
The definition of a sign in our code, and I'll tell, I'll, I'll read the end of it, because that's what's important. It says, any tenant insignia, device, or representation used as or which is in the nature of an announcement, direction, or advertisement. So, it's not strictly, signs are not strictly advertising a business, it says direction.
So, if we were to allow that, we'd have to include it in the variance?
Well, some of those signs are there illegally now, and, and probably our opinion down at the center of the table, because they never got permits for them when they went up. They just appeared.
That wasn't me.
The same, the same, the same with customer parking only, that's, that's a... The same, the same with customer parking only. That's, that's a sign. And you need permit for it. And that particular sign, that was an issue when Knights of Columbus was next door. Because your tenants or former tenants, there was, Knights of Columbus would have events and the overflow parking, the people would park over there. So they stuck up that big sign, and they actually started towing cars away. But now that Knights of Columbus is no longer there, I'm not so sure you actually need that customer-only parking sign anyhow.
And I know the only other big one was the carnival that went on. They failed that law. I mean, heck.
Well, yeah. And I think if you wanted a temporary sign, even if you didn't get the permit for it, which you still need permits for temporary signs. You probably wouldn't get any complaints for a temporary sign during the fireman's carnival that said customer parking only, like for those, you know, that week, but...
Sure. But I mean, as he was just saying, I wouldn't be addressing those illegal signs anyway.
How about the four-by-six one that says Barrett Center, however big it is, and it's got directional arrows?
That one isn't older. I'd have to do some research.
It has the same.
Right, I mean, I'd have to do some research whether that was permitted before. Those newer signs, you know, I've talked to past representatives of the village, and they said they never got permits for those. But the large one, that one's quite old. I would have to, I would have to do some research on that one, to be honest with you. That's more the wayfinding one that has the arrows.
Directional.
Right.
Yeah.
But again, it's a sign. So I see what you're...
No, I kinda do need those ones on that south facade, I really do. I'm trying to think. I mean, the directory sign I'm less concerned with on the east facade. I think with the signage, it's gonna be pretty evident what door to go in. I'm worried about that south facade though, especially with the urgent care.
Can we in our meeting minutes ask that the code enforcement officer address the additional signs that appear to be there without the proper paperwork? And that he will address them, and if they need to come in for a permit, they'll come in for a permit or whatever.
Or potentially a variance or...
Or potentially another variance, why not?
I'm okay with that.
Just what you want, isn't it? You wanna come back, don't you?
It is what it is, so it's not a big deal, and I do hope that I get to come back. Because that means we're filling up vacant space, so I don't pay for that.
All right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll work with Aaron on the signs that are already there.
That sounds fair.
And then, Joe, I would just ask that specifically we put something in there that the board has requested that the code enforcement officer, or whatever, building inspector, I don't know what your title is, Aaron.
Oh, Building Inspector, Code First One.
I like that!
Assistant to the DVD.
That's three of them.
Make an official kind of request that he assess the signs with the property owner there and take whatever action is appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you. So that addresses that. We don't have to put that into each one of these. Okay. So going back to this. Variance B, 19.9 square foot variance for a 36.5 foot square sign. Where a 16.6 foot square fine sign is allowed. This is specifically to J Stringer. And so, and would have all the other contingencies that we put on the other one. When the tenant leaves or moves, the sign comes down, or the variance goes away. That the lighting be controlled.
And what was the third one that we had on each one?
I think it was just two.
Lighting be controlled on a timer, that it would expire with the... Yep?
All right, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table from Kathy Bills.
For number B?
For variance B, or number B, for a 19.9 square foot variance for J Stringer for a 36.5 square foot sign, where a 16.6 foot sign is allowed. Subject to all the conditions on timing, and when the tenant exits, the variance ceases to exist. You and Kathy have placed that into each one of them.
Second.
Bill Baker has seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? All right, we move on to C, which is a 31.9 square foot variance for a 48.5 square foot sign, or a 16.6 square foot sign is allowed. And this one would be for...
Art of Movement.
Thank you. It's art movement here. Art of Movement. Subject to all the conditions that we've identified, the two conditions that we've identified.
I'll make that motion.
Michael makes the motion. All in favor? All right, no, I need second. Bill seconded it. All right, now I need all in favor.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None. Okay, moving on to D. This is a 34.4 square foot variance for a 109.4 square foot sign where 65.8 square foot sign is allowed. And this would be for, it looks like Urgent Care. Subject to all of the conditions that we put on each one.
I'd like that appropriate motion.
Bill has made that motion?
With conditions.
With the conditions? Kathy Bills has seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? And E. 25.1 square foot variance for 37.5 square foot sign where 12.4 square foot sign is allowed. And this one is for RGH.
I'll make that motion.
Michael has made the motion. Subject to the conditions on trust on the other ones?
Second.
Seconded by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Very good. And we've got the motion, or we've got the statement in there that the board is specifically requesting, whatever title he has? Okay. All right, very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time and appreciate your work with us.
Thank you.
Could I maybe roll you the permits? Could we settle for the permitting process now?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Everybody knows that we have a meeting September 2nd, 7:00 PM, to deal with the Xerox issue. To change in use?
No. No, they're just selling a parcel of the key. It's not even, it's not a subdivision, because in the village code, there's an exception for a subdivision if five acres or more. If the lats there, if it's two lats of five acres or more, it's not considered a subdivision. Big, huge lats. We're, so, and these are gonna end up, it's gonna end up with two lats, one of which is 84 acres, and the other one's 327 acres. So it doesn't fall into as a subdivision. So they're selling, basically they're selling four buildings.
Yeah, I think it's 1.4 million square feet total. So in order to...
Total? We just buy all four?
Yes, they're buying all of them. I forget which road it is, but basically from that second road north, they're buying. So that's building 200, 334, you know, the tower, the axon.
It's off of Mitchell Dean.
Yeah, Mitchell Dean North is basically what they're buying.
Who's buying it?
It's an unexposure, we don't know.
And it doesn't matter, because they would be subject to the existing use and everything that exists there right now. That is correct?
Well, if they wanna change the use, they gotta come back to the village.
They have to go to change the use.
They gotta come back to the village.
Right, and it is now a warehouse's...
Well, it's own industrial, Xerox, I think. Xerox, these buildings weren't just warehouses. They put copiers together and some of them. It's like building 200 and...
200 was a manufacturing building.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Actually used to put copies together there myself.
I don't think anybody used a copier anymore.
They don't, that's why I'm not...
Remember the green... That's right, that's what I worked for, the village! Okay, so that's seven o'clock. On the 2nd, we have polled folks, would like to have everybody here. Second thing, do we have anything coming up on the 16th?
I believe we will. It's gonna be a driveway.
Is that a driveway expansion?
Yeah. So why aren't we doing the September 2nd one?
Because Xerox has...
Time-sensitive.
They have to close before September 16th, so they wanted something sooner.
Okay.
And I did hand out the packets for Xerox tonight for...
Everybody should have done this, so. Is that bringing them to our house?
I will not be delivering them to your house. Please be sure to bring them here, although...
Wow, I like this stuff, huh?
Yeah, I don't, we do have a chat. I don't think Joe has distributed the legal notice for the agenda yet. Because there's more variances than are set forth on Birdman's cover. He's got the setback variances, but also needs height variances too.
Yeah, that is a legal notice we did, we did, he actually acknowledged, you said?
It's one of these weird things, and again, no one really, the history of this is to how these buildings got built without the height variances in the first place, but...
They did.
Somehow they did.
I did find out the dates.
And in fact, one of the buildings, building 334, actually the town-village line goes right through the middle of the building. Which is bizarre to think, you wouldn't have planned it that way, but... So my guess is that Xerox just put that one up and sort of slipped through the cracks.
So what we're taking is existing conditions, and we are being asked to bring it into conformance through Xerox.
Right, because of the fact that there are now splitting off a chunk of it. It's no longer a pre-existing management form.
So they're gonna have more variances? They're gonna list them out?
Yeah, they're in the legal notice that Joe got the...
Okay.
It shouldn't matter in state care.
Pardon me?
It shouldn't matter in state care.
Yeah. And the only other thing I would do is I would ask that if members of the board have not yet gotten your four hours of training, find a way to do it over the next few months. Some of the stuff that Joe sends out, their webinars, they're online, they qualify. Most of them are free.
I agree. I've resigned, we assigned that list.
You asked more, are there?
Well, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Are there more webinars coming?
Well, there's always some that you can take online. And I'll resign that list, because I don't have a copy of it. And then the next in-person will probably be in the fall.
Do we have to take an annual sexual harassment training?
If you, if you already take it at a different job...
So I could bring you in a certificate or something that said I did it?
Yeah, and you don't have to do it again.
All right.
How about those, those of us who are not employee employees?
He means agreeing on society.
Then yes, that was a year of things you have to take.
Yeah, so we can set up a time with Heather, because she coordinates all of that. And so if, you know, a couple of you or whoever still needs to take it.
And if you do it quick, I think the governor will come, because he missed it last year. All right.
We're gonna have someone sign a certificate for him, so.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
I agree with that.
Kathy's got a motion to adjourn. I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you. So...